Welcome to the May 24th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Vice Mayor Madeline Skels Harris has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of weeks ago, I met the most motivating and inspiring young man I think I've ever met in my life, and I'm gonna call him up, Noah Gaines. Noah, could you come up, please? And Noah's gonna tell us what he does, and he's gonna lead us in prayer and pledge allegiance. Is he tall enough?
Yeah.
Are you kidding? He's taller than I am.
Okay, Noah.
My stepstool's right there if you just wanna step up. I'm kidding.
Um, when I was about like eight years old, I was, I kept on seeing homeless people, and I asked my mom, "What can I do to help them out?" She said, "Well, we can always prepare them goody bags or anything that can help them out through like needing." And we put socks and clothes in there for them, so that's how they can be warm, and they have some little snacks in there for them. So that's how they, so if they were hungry, they can just eat and all, and then sooner or later, my church family, they would help me out. And then every fourth Saturday, we would go to the church, and we would always feed and clothe the homeless.
And what's the name of your foundation you started?
Noah's Heart Ministry.
Noah's Heart Mission. Could you lead us in prayer and then pledge allegiance?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Noah.
Dear Lord, thank you for this day today. Thank you for waking us up and letting us come out and enjoy ourselves today, Lord. And thank you for everyone else who came out today, Lord, and just came here just to be in something so special. And dear Lord, thank you for just keeping us, Lord, and thank you for just keeping your hand on us, Lord, and always letting us be faithful and look on the good side and look on the bright side, Lord, and just know that everything will be okay. Thank you, Lord, for like whenever bad things happen, you were there for us, Lord, and we thank you so much. And we just come today, Lord, just to thank you so much. Everything that you've done for us, just thank you. And dear Lord, watch over everyone, Lord, and keep your hand on them still, and always keep on blessing us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge to the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Noah, do you have your parents here with you? Could your family come, and we get the picture with your family? You're gonna take a picture with the mayor, okay?
Tell the mayor to stand up.
I'll tell you what, y'all need to be a couple minutes, two minutes.
Okay.
What'd you say, Afika?
He's going to get that stool.
Surely not.
I bet he's gonna give him a key.
What's he gonna do?
Give him a key.
Oh, awesome.
Noah?
We have somebody.
Noah Gaines.
Gaines.
Noah Gaines.
Noah Gaines. The camera or do you want me to just?
Noah's Heart, thank you. I couldn't understand.
Bart has a camera. You have a camera? Okay.
I know.
Yay!
And now I can tell ya, I've had this a long time. Tonight, seeing what you've done in your prayer, it is my pleasure, what you're doing for other people, to give you the key to the safe house.
Yay!
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Item three, A and B, has been removed from your agenda. We'll move to new business, and we'll consider for approval renewal of certificate of compliance for wine in retail stores. You have four, and we'll do these all in one motion. You have the Dan Ratchup at Publix number 1163 on 1731 South Rutherford Boulevard; All right, you've got several items on the consent agenda. Sweet S, Michael Broomefield at Publix number 1234, 2650 New Salem Highway; Richard Smith Anything wishing, that you wish to pull on or off or off the consent agenda? at Publix 1164, 3450 Memorial Boulevard; and Patrick Columbia at Publix 1172, 4175 Franklin
There's nothing to be removed, and no questions or comments, I'll move for approval.
Road. Ms. Wright, is everything in order?
It is, and this is a renewal, so they have these spirits there at those locations
Motion second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
already. Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
I'll move for approval.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Second.
Aye.
Motion second.
Mr. Shackleton.
Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris. Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance. Mr. Wade.
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Shackleton. Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
You have the minutes for the May 10th meeting that will need for approval.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider recommendations of the deputy city attorney regarding approval and nodment of a right of repurchase, Eighth Amendment of Agreement of Sale and Purchase Any additions or deletions to the minutes? for Real Estate in sale of Lot 4, Phoenix subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second.
Yes, Mayor.
Ms. Wright, you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Council members, good evening.
Aye.
A couple of weeks ago, we considered this item.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
There is a proposal by the current owners of Lot 4, the Phoenix subdivision, to sell
Mr. Smotherman.
that property. We were considering the method by which we might, the city might let go of its right of repurchase. Council had some suggestions and questions on that matter. Since that time, we have reached a new arrangement with the buyer of that property. The buyer is willing to accept a right of repurchase by the city for three years after the closing of the sale. That's the same amount of time that we had requested from the original sale of this property. We feel that's appropriate. Also, they will notify us in the event that they should decide to sell the property as opposed to build on it themselves, and in that event, we'll have a period of time to exercise our option to repurchase if we choose to do so. So with that, I would ask that council approve these two items, authorize the mayor to sign both documents. I have one ready for signature tonight. The other one is waiting original signatures. They've been, it's been signed, but the originals haven't been received yet, so they should be here in a few days. Happy to answer your questions.
Thanks for putting in the extra work on this. I appreciate it. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now hear from the fire and rescue chief regarding the CIP reimbursement resolution for the completion of the Doug Young Public Safety Training Facility. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You have before you a reimbursement resolution to help fund the next phase of the Doug Young Public Safety Training Facility. As you are, most of you are aware, the training tower building is nearing completion at this point, and it's time to begin the site work and interior infrastructure work, such as the utilities et cetera on the site. This $1.4 million in a reimbursement resolution would help us complete that next phase of the project. We have a, actually, we identified a contract through our owner's representatives, of Alice, and we now are working with that architect for the next phase, which is the buildings beyond this phase, and that contract should be coming back to you from them within the next few weeks. In addition, we're asking you to approve the contract with Rosso LLC to complete the site work, the terms of that contract you have in the letter, as well as the terms of the contract for their bid process. We're asking you to approve this. It's not been fully reviewed by the city attorney. There were some changes that the city attorney requested that would be made. We're asking you to approve this pending complete review of the city attorney of the contract for Rosso.
No questions, I'll just move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Wright.
Which one are we approving? B?
We're doing the Resolution 18R09.
Okay. Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shackleton.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, well now, move into our, thank you, chief, our 2018-2019 budget in your books. We're gonna look at outside agencies first.
Mayor, you have a list in the insert on the very first page of the request for funding from outside agencies. As our typical practice, unless there was a formula that caused the number to change, we would recommend to you the exact same number as the previous year. There are six new applications for funding at the bottom of the sheet, and a one-time application that we'd advise you to take serious consideration of, $275,000 Sorba, the Southern Off-Road Bicycling Association. It's rather an unusual way to do it, but this may be the best route for the completion of the city's mountain bike trails in Barfield Crescent Park. So we would ask you that you take serious consideration of that $275,000 for Sorba at the bottom. The only major new request, $70,000 for the public library system, both Line Ball and Myrtle Glanton, and through the formula, $24,000 of the hotel motel tax for the tourism efforts of the chamber.
And let me say, you get to say this every year, we wanna thank all the different organizations who are here, and thank you for all the heavy lifting that each of you do in the community. The way that we handle our budget process, if you've not ever been here before, we really have to consider outside agencies, but we really won't be making any decisions on anything tonight. It's really just if there's any questions. We had a meeting before this, and then we're meeting on the, what were the dates, Jim? Six, fourth?
We start on the fifth, the fifth, sixth, and seventh of June.
And then the 12th, 13th, and 14th.
If necessary.
Yeah, so we've, we'll get to discuss the budget quite a bit, but I wanna thank y'all for what y'all do. Are there any questions that we have on funding from outside agencies? Mr. Tindall, regarding the request of Sorba, I know that you've been working on that with the Parks and Recreation Department. Is that consistent with what the council and the Parks and Recreation Commission have already looked at?
The plans for the bike trail are, what we're doing with Sorba is, is that they will come in and manage the trail clearing process. We'll pay directly for, as needed, for labor and materials, so that'll come directly from the city. So the money's just being allocated, but we're gonna manage the entire process as far as the financial aspects are concerned. But Sorba will be developing the trails and doing the trail clearing process and things like that. So it's a very controlled allocation, but they're the agency that's done this quite a bit in a lot of other jurisdictions and have the expertise.
Is it just a one-time?
This is a one-time allocation of funds.
Oh, yeah, it's just to get the trails cleared and...
This won't appear on next year.
Will not occur again.
But we did have this. You wanna build a lot more trails.
We did have this on our CIP as well, correct?
We did have, I don't think it was exactly this amount, I think it was a significantly larger amount. I don't remember exactly, but I wanna say it was maybe just a fraction over a million dollars in the CIP.
Okay. Any questions on outside agencies? All right. Y'all are welcome to stay for the entirety of our meeting, but you will not be judged or held in contempt if you decide that you wanna get up and leave now. Thank y'all. All right, we'll now move to the Water Resources operating budget.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to come for you tonight. We have a balanced budget for our FY19, our physical year 19, in the amount of $52,578,000. That is an operating revenue of $45.38 million, and TAP revenue of $7.2 million. TAP revenue is based on growth. We also have $22.34 million in operating expenses, $6.2 million in capital expenditures, $13.9 in debt service, roughly $10 million, that takes that growth revenue and it expenses it. We also have about $2.8 million in sinking funds and major repair and replacements that we put into our working capital reserves. So water operating revenue, it's flat from last year's budget. Our, as you know, our water service area is, does not, it's constrained, we're inside of CUD's boundary. Regarding sewer operating revenue, we're up 4.4% from last year's budget and 1.7% from our projected FY18. These show you some revenue trends, it just kinda shows you that we, pretty steady trend of $1.4 million per year in sewer, and almost half a million in water for the past 12 years. TAP revenue, again, this is a growth revenue that is expensed into our working reserve account. We are up 7.5% from last year's budget and down 9.5% from our projections. Total expenses, our debt service, capital expenditures, and operating expenses are up approximately between 4 and 4.5%. And our TAP revenue and sinking fund transfer is down 3%. On personnel, we are asking for five new positions, administration, engineering, the water plant, operation and maintenance, and our stormwater. I've done a little different graphic here. The two boxes in green are those five positions. Four of those positions are growth-related, from inspections that we have to conduct based on growth, and then one is a senior accountant for succession planning purposes. The blue boxes show promotions. Really, there's three promotions in existing personnel, and we've got three reclassifications that we're asking for. Some more trends, this just kinda shows you where we were in 2007 on 82 plans approved, and we're back up to 85 in 2017. And that 17 number for 2018 is, it's been updated, we're at 43. So our growth is, this kinda is meant to justify why we have to get that, that water inspector. Our stormwater, post-construction devices are growing significantly. These are also an inspection required annually. Our crossconnection control devices, you can kinda see when we brought in our third crossconnection tech back in 2008, and what we're asking for now is a fourth crossconnection tech. Stormwater revenue, we're showing a revenue of the stormwater fee at $2.95 million. The annual expenses are roughly $1.89 million. This is, the rate-funded capital reserves and the stormwater repair replacement and the working capital reserve expense is roughly $1 million, and that's part of the stormwater fee that is, that we can effectively adjust based on deferring purchase of equipment or deferring capital projects. The $1.89 million of operating expenses is really that, the important number. This is again, kind of a revenue trend, it shows you that we're growing roughly, we're getting about $61,000 annually in additional stormwater revenue. This is from FY15 to FY19, our operating expenses have gone up 12.4% from last year's budget. That's to take into account two CCTV technicians that'll be working at the streets department, and one new stormwater inspector. This is a kind of a glimpse into our pro forma, how we deal with, we look at FY22 and our expenses, and we wanna make sure that we stay, our new policy says we need to stay above three months of reserved operating expenses, that's the blue line, and our old policy was 12 months of reserved operating expenses. So you can kinda see, we're right in the middle at about maintaining six months of operating reserves based on our capital improvements. Accomplishments, we rebranded our department, we got the Stones River Water Resource Recovery Facility expanded by 50%. We're continuing to develop our 2021 NPDS permit rationale. Our bioassessment results are extraordinary on the West Forkstones River. We opened up our AMI web portal to customers, this allows for early leak notification, water budgeting, and consumption activity, and we gained momentum in our Help to Others Customer Assistance program participation. Our goals, we're finalizing our Water Resource Integration Plan, which is our 20-year long-term planning document, getting the Northeast Regional Pump Station and Forest Main design and the alignment for the Forest Main set. We're looking at a Phase One of a thermal dryer for manufacturing Class A biosolids, and again, some wet weather treatment train plan for our Water Resource Recovery Facility for wet weather events, complete the wasteload allocation model for West Forkstones River, and define some workforce competency initiatives for better compensation. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. White?
If no questions, I move for approval.
We're not approving budgets.
We wanna approve tonight.
This is just repeated.
She just still wanted to make a motion to let everybody know that we approve of Darren.
We can second that. I'll second that. I'll second that one.
I need that affirmation.
We'll vote by acclamation. Darren, great job, we approve.
You are quick.
Dr. Gilbert, y'all don't have as much fun at y'all's meetings, do you?
No, we don't, we don't.
All right.
But I think, I think it's really nice that you approve people, though, we're all for that. That's that whole child approach.
You just received, you had a council stamp of approval.
Mr. Crumley, do they have the magic?
They, they, available to them, but I don't know if they have it at their...
Okay, all right. Well, I'm just gonna talk through part of it. I'm gonna talk about the school system, and Mr. Anderson's gonna talk about money.
As you know, Murfreesboro City Schools is your school system, and I think that you all are very proud of it, and I certainly appreciate your support. I appreciate our board members being here tonight, Ms. Nancy Rainier, and Mr. Wes Ballard, and Mr. Phil King. And we have an exceptional board, we have a great relationship with our teachers, and I'm very proud of what we've done. We operate on what we call the upside-down triangle, which means that our children are first. That puts me at the bottom, which is fine, but, but the whole goal is every decision that we make is made for children. But on the other hand, we realize that Maslow's hierarchy talks about the need for safety, the need for food, the need for protection, and so we also deal with that because we know that our children cannot learn unless they are safe. And so when you look at this budget, you'll see an emphasis on safety, and we certainly appreciate the discussion that you're having about providing police officers in each of our schools. We have a tremendous partnership with them. In fact, it was interesting, it was like old home night here because seeing so many of the nonprofits that we work with, so we could not do what we do without your support, without the support of the board, without the support of the nonprofits. As far as successes, we are an exemplary school district, there are only 48 of those in the state, that's based on our test scores of last year. Scales and Discovery are reward schools, and again, there are only two of, these are two of 59 statewide, so this means these schools are certainly in the top 5%. We have started a Ready for Kindergarten program, which is for birth to five families. It is based on donations, but it is preparing some of our families that might not have access to training. We're working with, we've worked with at least 25 each semester, and so we're helping them with preparation for literacy. You'll be hearing about a reading bus, in fact, you're invited to the ribbon cutting for our reading bus, Books on Bus, we call him Bob, and he has a mascot of a bear, but we will be doing a ribbon cutting there on the 31st. As far as new things, this last year, we had a cheer team, they placed fourth in national competition. Mitchell Nelson achieved lighthouse status with the Leader in Me program. Irma Segal had the top award for the Invention Convention, that was a national award. The Discovery School Robotics Team was at regionals, Bradley went to theatrics performances in Atlanta and came back with awards, and then most recently, Overall Creek was named one of 15 STEM-designated schools, and that's among elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. So we're very proud of what's happened there. When we talk about the whole child, we're talking about social-emotional. So we have nine of our schools, nine of our 12, that are model schools, as designated by our partnership with Vanderbilt and the state. The Department of Ed recently highlighted Murfreesboro City Schools, both for our work with social-emotional learning, and also with our work with farm-to-school and the applied learning that we have going on with our greenhouses. Black Fox Edition opened this last year, and Mr. Thompson retired, and we had a celebration today, so we are going to miss him. If you haven't seen it, we built a house inside Hobgood School, we called it "If I Had a Hammer," and in two hours, the children built houses. We expanded that recently to a build, a panel bill in partnership with Habitat for Humanity, so we're very excited about that. And also, we have the Mid Cumberland Teacher of the Year recently was highlighted, and so we're very excited about what we're producing as far as our teachers. As far as the goals that permeate this budget, diversity, we have a tremendously diverse student body, and we celebrate that diversity every day, so to make sure that we're meeting the needs of every student. Also, the safe environment, we're talking about a physically safe environment, but also an emotionally safe environment. Recruiting and retaining and growing the best personnel, so we have expanded our outreach as far as hiring personnel and recruiting personnel. There is a teacher shortage now, even in this county, and we feel very good about the personnel that we have hired. And then finally, responding to growth. So we are projecting that we'll have about 240 students that will be new students next year. When we, when we talk about growth, I think that you all recognize that really in March and April, we saw probably more single housing... Discovery School Robotics Team was at regionals, Bradley went to theatrics performances in Atlanta and came back with awards, and then most recently, Overall Creek was named one of fifteen STEM-designated schools, and that's among elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools, so we're very proud of what's happened there. When we talk about the whole child, we're talking about social, emotional, so we have nine of our schools, nine of our 12 that are model schools, is designated by our partnership with Vanderbilt in the state. The Department of Ed recently highlighted Murfreesboro City Schools, both for our work with social, emotional learning, and also with our work with farm-to-school and the applied learning that we have going on with our greenhouses. Black Fox Edition opened this last year, and Mr. Thompson retired, and we had a celebration today, so we are going to miss him. If you haven't seen it, we built a house inside Hobgood School, we called it "If I Had a Hammer," and in two hours, the children built houses. We expanded that recently to a build, a panel build in partnership with Habitat for Humanity, so we're very excited about that. And also, we have the Mid Cumberland Teacher of the Year recently was highlighted, and so we're very excited about what we're producing as far as our teachers. As far as the goals that permeate this budget, diversity, we have a tremendously diverse student body, and we celebrate that diversity every day, so to make sure that we're in meeting the needs of every student. Also, the safe environment, we're talking about a physically safe environment, but also an emotionally safe environment. Recruiting and retaining and growing the best personnel, so we have expanded our outreach as far as hiring personnel and recruiting personnel. There is a teacher shortage now, even in this county, and we feel very good about the personnel that we have hired. And then finally responding to growth, so we are projecting that we'll have about two-hundred-and-forty students, that will be new students next year. When we, when we talk about growth, I think that, that you all recognize that really in March and April, we saw probably more single housing, family housing permits than we had seen for the past 12 years, and that's impacting us, and thank you for moving forward with the school that will be at St. Andrews and Veterans because we need that desperately. Again, we project 24 new students. Now, when you look at the budget, though, what you will notice is that there have been places where the budget, we, we have chosen to cut it. And the way this works is, we start working with principals and department heads about February with what their needs are and what they would like to have. Since that, we have cut probably three million and then took another million-dollar cut, but we feel like that what we're proposing to you will allow us to continue to produce the students that we are producing here, and will continue to allow us to be an exemplary system. As far as those cuts, we experienced about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of federal cuts that we were not expecting, these are for special ed and also for our low-income schools, our title schools. Also, at the same time, we saw our insurance go up, our state insurance go up about three percent, and our retirement was also going up, so that's something we can't control. We do understand, and I think that we need to make you aware, that, that with the dispersing of the costs to the, to the departments that use those costs, it makes sense, but you will notice that there is an increased cost there, so really that doesn't, I don't think, impact the total city budget, it just impacts particular departments, and that's the case with us. And so, what we have done, we have added one counselor and one behavior specialist. Because we're starting a new school, we'll have a half-year of administrative personnel that will come on board in January. When I was last with the council, the council asked me about when we start a new school as far as additional personnel, and what I said was, we would not perceive necessarily additional teaching personnel, but I need to clarify tonight that indeed, we would have additional music teachers, additional librarians, additional art teachers, so those teachers that are the special area teachers, we would have, so I wanted to make sure that you understood that. As far as what we did with the budget, we have, we, as I said, have, we're looking at two-hundred-and-forty new students, and yet we are not adding teaching positions to this particular budget, and we are cutting back our educational assistant positions. The budget does not include technology or carpet replacement or a lot of the other capital outlay that we would like to have, but what it does include is, it does have a separate million-dollar capital outlay that we desperately need, and, and I can show you where that is in the budget. So, what we're coming to and asking for tonight is the one point five million for our operating budget, and then the one million for our capital outlay that we would need. So, I'm, I'm ready for any questions you have, and if I don't know the answers, Gary will.
School, school board members, thank y'all for coming tonight, appreciate y'all being here. Dr. Gilbert, looking at the new school, if, if we fast-track and we have that ready by, I guess it would be this time next year?
That would be a really nice thing. Well, well, no, what we're looking at is, we're looking at August, so basically, we'll finish that school about the time that we'll have, have it open, so we're looking at finishing at the last of July or August.
And this budget includes the new teachers and...
No, it would not, that, we would come to you for that next year. Now, as far as new teachers, as far as classroom teachers, we don't foresee any more of an increase, really, probably next year with classroom teachers, because we would take the teachers at our schools like Kason and Scales and Overall, where there's an overcrowded, and we would shift those teachers, but we would be coming to you for art teachers, for music teachers, for librarians, so those teachers that are, are specified to one school, we will be coming to you for that.
And the custodians, they're on a different contract, right?
Yes, would you, you like to talk about that?
When we open up a new school, we have to also add custodians, we have to add librarians, we have to add utility expense, we have to add the chemicals and paper goods, et cetera, and all those extra things that go with it. When we opened up Overall Creek, it was between one point two-five and one million increase that we absorbed into our budget that time when we opened it up. There's always extra expenses, and, and she's right about the teachers, the teachers kind of go with it, but it depends on how much growth we project for next, for the next year.
Yeah, you've done a fabulous job in the system this year.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Any questions for Dr. Gilbert? Dr. Gilbert, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you for your support, council.
All right. Gary, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll now look at the Evergreen Cemetery. And that is in your supplemental information, the blue tab. Mr. Crumley, are you presenting this one?
No, sir, Mayor, I, I was not anticipating on presenting this, I'm not sure I see anybody from...
Sure. All right.
I'm Betty Burrow with Evergreen Cemetery.
If you don't, pull the microphone down there so that we can hear you. Thank you.
I'm Betty with Evergreen Cemetery, we're presenting our 2018, 19 budget for the year. We're anticipating income this year of, with grave sales going up, we're going to be raising grave prices to coincide with increases in our payroll this year to try to bring it up to the unified pay plan that, in line with the city. We'll be adding another mower this year, and I think that's about, we are anticipating on opening about, I think, seven-hundred-and-forty more grave spaces in the new area to the left-hand side of the cemetery in the very back because of the growth that's coming up. We're, as the city grows, of course, Evergreen Cemetery's going to grow. We're anticipating that we'll, we'll need those, I think we've got about five-hundred and something more graves in the glory section, and we'll be going to the, I think, the new serenity section that will bring us about seven-hundred-and-forty more graves for the growth of Murfreesboro. The income, we've anticipated, I've, I've taken the last four years and combined that on how many graves we've opened and divided it by the four years, and based on that, one-hundred-and-seventy-five graves is an estimated, which is very low estimation, would that bring that, our grave prices at seventeen ninety-five each, that would bring in revenue of three-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars on our opening charges, based on a hundred-and-thirty-six opened at fifteen-hundred, that would bring us a revenue of two-hundred-and-five-thousand. We're anticipating, the Board of Commission has met, and we have approved to raise those grave prices to seventeen ninety-five, and the grave openings to fifteen-hundred with the weekend opening charges of two-thousand to bring our revenue up to where we need it. Our bronze marker sales, we're estimating around five-thousand dollars. Perpetual care interest, we're estimating that around forty-eight thousand eight-hundred, and other income coming in around twenty-five-hundred, which would bring our income to around five, five-seventy-five, five-thirty. Our estimated cost of expenses with our land development and our new mowers, we are going to try to go to the rear discharge mowers so that we won't have any problem with the mowers blowing grass on the monuments and so forth, that we've been having a few issues with that, so we're going to try to update our equipment and get the new mowers that, that rear discharge. Our total expenses, we expect to be around five-seventy-five, three-hundred, which will balance our budget.
All right, any questions? All right, see none, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Crumley, are there any other budget items that we want to look at?
Mayor, I don't have any.
Okay, all right, you have some reappointments, just to look for the, for Tommy Campbell and Mr. Phil King, who is out, I think Mr. Phil's out, Phil's out in the audience, this is for the, for the Cable TV Commission. That'll be for our next meeting. Any beer permits?
Are we not doing this one?
No, that's just going to...
For future?
For future.
Oh, okay, she didn't have that on here. No, there are no beer permits.
Okay. Any statements that need to be paid?
No, sir.
Okay, any other business from the staff or city council?
Shane, I think we got those last meeting for reappointment, and we were supposed to vote on the...
Okay. Well, I would be happy to take a motion on that.
And the only reason I say that was because there was no comma between the name, and I remember it being that same way as it is tonight on...
Thank you.
I, I move for approval of the appointments.
Second. Motion second, Ms. Wrightfield, call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thank you for serving, Mr. King. We all got a letter from Comcast, so we'll let you deal with that now. All right, any other information that needs to come before the, before the city council? All right, see you none, we'll stand adjourned.